The CCSD 21, July 24, 2025, that should be August. We are in August, aren't we?
We are.
August 21, 2025, Regular Board of Education meeting is called to order. Degmar, would you please take attendance?
Yes, Jessica.
I'm here. Here.
I am here. Carrie.
Here.
Arlen.
Here.
Eliana.
Here.
Bill.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Welcome again, everyone. I'd like to welcome Sheri Klump from the Wheeling Park District. Thank you again for attending our meetings. Any individual physically present tonight wishing to address the board must complete a comment card and provide it to Ms. Bender. Any written public comments may also be submitted by emailing us at district21@ccsd21.org. I just want to welcome everyone to our first board meeting of the new school year, to our new and returning staff, our students and our families. We are so glad you're here. And I know my children are rolling their eyes as I say this, but I am truly excited to start another school year. Like many years before, last year brought its share of challenges, and while I'm sure this year will as well. I actually, I believe we are getting stronger at recognizing our obstacles and addressing them with thoughtful and data-driven strategies. And remember, we're not chasing perfection, we're aiming for progress. Mistakes will happen, but each one is a step in our learning journey. I said this Tuesday at Teacher Institute, but it bears repeating, here's to another year of collaboration, civic engagement, meaningful partnerships, and the shared goal of making District 21 the very best it can be. All right, let's jump into our agenda. This is a super fun agenda item. We are going to welcome and introduce our new student board representatives. To give you a little bit of history and background, this is the third year we've had this program, and we are continuing to refine and improve the experience for both the students and the board. This year, we had a very impressive and large candidate pool to choose from. Each candidate completed an application process, identifying their interest, their perspective of the program, their ability to carry out their duties, and each submitted two letters of recommendation. Then Debbie and I met with the candidates from each group, from each middle school, in a group interview and had some really excellent candid discussions with them about how they would go about reaching student voices beyond their friend or peer group, and instances where they've advocated for a cause or a change, regardless of the success or outcome. And I know Debbie will agree with me that we were impressed with the poise, the valuable insight, and the deep consideration each student presented. This summer, I also met with Dr. Connolly and Chris LaPitino about our expectations for this year of the program. The student representatives provide us with valuable information and insight on their school experience and bring a perspective to the board as we make decisions impacting their education. This year, our representatives will be expected to stay for the duration of our board meetings, approximately till about 8:30 or so, which generally should be our whole meeting, so that they can get a better idea of the civic process we use and the issues that we deal with, and hopefully even offer their own insight. And where possible, we will try to align your monthly topic with something relevant in our agenda. And always, we will encourage you to ask questions and participate in discussion with us. So let's welcome our new representatives. Please come up as I call your name and take your seat. From Cooper Middle School, we have Alex Kay. From Holmes Middle School, we have Selma C. And from London Middle School, we have Fareed. Welcome, welcome to the board table. I'll ask you to please introduce yourself, maybe share with us a little bit about what you did this summer, and what your hopes and expectations are for this coming year of the representative program. So Selma, if we could start with you.
Hi, my name is Selma, and one hope I have, I'm representing Holmes Middle School, and one hope I have is to give as many as perspective and opinions of students of Holmes as I can give to the board.
Did you do anything fun this summer?
I traveled a lot.
Oh, great, great. All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alex Krumov, and I'm the student representative for Cooper Middle School. I wanted to be a part of the board because I wanted to make school a better and more inclusive environment for everyone. And this summer, I went to Miami and Q West.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fareed Salami. I'm the board representative for London Middle School. I wanted to become a board member so I can let the student body's voice be heard and their perspectives be heard of what things they'd like to change and what things they don't like and like about school. Something I did over the summer was I went to Michigan, and I went to a lot of birthday parties.
Sounds like a great summer. We are so excited to have you join us. Does anyone have any questions for our representatives?
Welcome.
We certainly will. All right, let's move along to announcements and celebrations. Dr. Connolly?
Thank you and good evening. We, as we have started to do frequently at the beginning of our board meetings, would like to do some celebrations of some things that are really going well for the district and highlight the dedication of many members of our staff and the different contributions that they make to allowing our district to be a place where our students thrive. So I first wanted to start off by just noting the number of really amazingly successful back-to-school events that we had over the summer. And, you know, between registration fairs, between being at Tuesday Night Market and really trying to get information out there, but then also being at the National Nights Out for our towns, you know, there's a lot of different points of contact that we have tried to make over the summer with our community and with our families. But two that I wanted to highlight in particular, and we've got a couple of slides, I'm going to ask Janelle and Amy, is Amy still, to come on up so we can kind of talk about two events, our Literacy on the Lawn and then our Back-to-School Bash.
Good evening. Thank you for a few minutes to celebrate some of the things that have been going on. I'm a little nervous to follow the excellent students that have joined the board. Thank you for being here. Amy and I are going to just speak real briefly and show you just a few pictures from the event if you weren't able to be with us. So I'm going to let Amy kick us off and talk a little bit about Literacy on the Lawn.
Good evening. I'm very excited to talk about literacy. This summer, we expanded our partnership with Indian Trails Public Library and our family learning program to offer our very first annual Literacy on the Lawn 2025. On July 28, it was a very warm event in the high 90s, but we had over 320 students and families participate in the event. It was, to say the least, a wonderful event, and the library instantly asked us to partner with them again. So we'll expand that into next year. We had a puppet show that students and families participated in. We had a multilingual story walk that went through the park, Horizon Park outside, that ended with a sweet treat from Kona Ice. The library sponsored a scavenger hunt throughout the library as well as throughout the park. And families also got to pick, students got to pick a book in the language of their choice, as well as they got a picnic blanket to take home as well. So we are super excited about the partnership that we're going to extend into this year with all of our literacy nights and our continued partnership with our family learning program and building literacy within the district.
And just a shout out to the library. They had a table of crafts where the kids could also make bookmarks and bags, and they had the scavenger hunt. It was just, there was always something a parent and a kid could be doing together while they were even waiting for the puppet show to go on, and it was just a great night. You can see on the slide the numerous people who helped pull the event off. And so the other big event that we wanted to also talk about was our Back-to-School Bash that just happened on the 7th. And again, this was a relatively tight turnaround for us this year, but we had many wonderful partners who came from the community to support the event, including the Park District, including the Indian Trails Library. Again, Walmart Vision and Glasses, they were out of the bags they had brought within moments, and it was just a fabulous opportunity for families to come. It was another warm evening, but we did great, and we were able to still host and be outdoors. We had, did I skip one? We had lovely entertainment from a local mariachi group, from a local folk dance group, which just brought so much liveliness to the event. We had many, many mascots represented, and those many, many mascots were very appreciated by all the children who would run up and want to take pictures and want to hold hands, and it was fantastic. And balloon folks and face painting, and we had a photo booth where families could come and put props on and take pictures together. So it was quite a great opportunity to not only get a backpack for many, but be able to engage in some of these family activities together as well. Again, we were able to give some Kona Ice for friends, and so there were 950 cups of Kona Ice that were given out that evening, 519 backpacks, and we counted 1,438 people on our clicker, but we could not keep up with our clicker. So we know there are probably more than what we were able to do, but we felt like it was a very nice turnout for this event, and again, looking forward to an annual piece. I just wanted to put up a quick slide and ask a few people to stand. So if Norbea Agalar and Donna Andrusik and Nora Malina would stand up, thank you. These ladies are the powerhouse force behind the things that get done in the district and the support that we provide to families and parents. They are our family liaisons and our family learning program liaison. And right behind them, thank you ladies so much, Alyssa, Anya, Sheri, all the administrators, we had so many principals and the assistant principals come out, and our whole educational services team come out to really support the event. So thank you for taking a moment. I want to also just shout out Glenn and Bill and Jose and George because they were phenomenal helping us to pull this together, and our print shop guy Jim, who was also phenomenal and has been for so many events, and Cass and Andy for the communications room and taking great pictures. So thank you so much.
And I understand you had a couple of celebrities in the costumes?
Say that again?
You had a couple of celebrities in your costumes as well?
We did, we did. We have an all-ages audience, and so I was kind of being a little careful with the magic of mascots.
All of our mascots are celebrities, all of them.
It was an amazing evening, just absolutely amazing.
Yeah, the Back-to-School Bash was, other than being 9,000 degrees outside, it was, the Kona Ice was, was... And thank you to all of our staff that put on the events. I know it's a tremendous amount of work, but you can, you can see the looks on the kids' faces. The families love it, and I'm just, I'm grateful that you do all of that for our community.
So we have a couple more that I want to make sure that, so the other event, this is a new event, but, you know, I think it was a nice event that will continue to grow over time. We did have a back-to-school 5K family fun run, and that happened in cooperation with the Wheeling Chamber of Commerce, Wheeling Police Department. And yeah, what was the name of the group, the supporting group for Wheeling Police Department? Okay, the Wheeling Police Foundation. And we actually had people who came in to run the 5K, the operating, and we ended up with just about 60 runners, is that right? Yeah. And so, you know, we're looking forward to that event happening again and just kind of growing as kind of people get more aware of it. So yeah, just a lot of really great events to kind of generate good energy coming back into the school year. So again, I just really want to say thank you for all of those that were involved with that. We also know that this was another major summer of renovation and construction in the district, just about $19 million worth of work. And that is on top of the fact that it was a shorter summer than what we had last year when we also had a large amount of work in the building being done. So that also then is compounding on the normal things that you do over the summer to make sure that a school is ready to reopen in the school year. And that work is not being done by me or anybody sitting at this table. It is being done by a really, really incredibly dedicated team within our operations division. So our, you know, maintenance and custodial, our technology teams, but particularly maintenance and custodial, the amount of work that they put in to make sure that things are ready to go, you know, moving things out of classrooms, you know, like keeping containment on the, you know, everything that is going on during the construction period, then moving things back into classrooms and cleaning up after, construction guys don't really clean up after themselves, so we have to do it, and that's okay. But it's just an incredible amount of work that goes into, that is not seen by many people. You know, people come back to school and it looks awesome, right? They haven't seen the, you know, the blood, sweat, and tears that have gone into making it that way. So I really wanted the members of our, of our operations division and maintenance and custodial and tech teams to, you know, come and just take a stand, guys, and just really amazing work. Glenn, I'll put you on the spot if you want to say anything else about your teams. You don't have to, but I'll put you on the spot and let you do it anyway.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to break this down. Julie, well, with being a team, there's a lot of things with the custodial team and the maintenance team. Again, it's not just one group. It's Archon, it's Nicholas, it's the custodial team, it's the maintenance team, it's a lot of vendors, it's the superintendents that work for Nicholas. They really, really worked hard. I know the teachers' lounges were a thing that we were trying to get done at the last minute, last minute. There was one of the superintendents, Matt, I was running around in each school trying to see if it was done and ready, and Matt was five minutes ahead of me in every school. I got to the last school in Ross, and he was uploading the microwaves and sticking them in the microwave panels, and I was like, wow, this was great. So it was a very collaborative effort, a lot of teamwork throughout for everybody, you know, and these custodians and the maintenance guys, I mean, the dirt, the mess, you know. You always know in the grocery stores that you pardon our dust, while we get mountains of dust and dirt. So again, to get it all ready in time for school opening, and I get principals saying, you know, they'd come, I don't think that school's going to open. And if you're a teacher, you don't know how, and it does. So thank you very much.
And that is a true statement to make. I mean, we have four new principals who have never experienced this before, and I had to talk each one of them off the ledge and go, trust me, you'll come in on a Monday morning and it'll be like, everything, the sun will be out, birds will be singing, it'll, and that's because of everything that they are doing. Tyler, I'll put you on the spot. Anything you want to, you want to say about your tech team? I told, I told Mike that I wasn't going to do this, and I'm doing it anyway, so.
Yeah, I got a speech. No, our team has done an absolutely fantastic job. This has been a much larger summer than we've had in, in the past with prep for new staff laptops, new, really new dynamic to how teachers can teach with their smart boards in their classrooms, on top of just a lot of infrastructure work that most people don't really see, but it's really critical to keeping things working now and a decade or decades into the future. We're actually have a project that's going to be something that we're going to have for 30 to 40 years. So there's a lot that our team has done, and it's, to the grace under fire that they have, the commitment they have, it's honestly the best team I've ever worked with. I've been doing, thank you. I've been doing education technology off and on for 25 years, and honestly, this is the best team I've ever worked with, and it's, it's been fantastic to see them grow, to see them learn, and happy to start the year fresh with them. Thank you.
One last shout out, and then I have an introduction. But, and I made note of this at the Opening Day Institute with the whole staff, that this year, due to the tireless work of Carmina Martinez, our registrar, and our family liaisons and our office staff, we had the highest number of returning students registered prior to the start of school than we've ever had. By the, by Tuesday morning, the number I used Tuesday morning was outdated. Going into Tuesday morning, there were 37 returning students district-wide that had not registered. By the time I made that, that statement, it had been down to 24. And so 24 students that, district-wide, that were returning that had not registered. My first year in the district, I think we had over 700 that had not registered. So, you know, just the steady amount of work that is being done and the phone calls that are being made, and like, what do you need to get this done? We need to have, all of that work goes into us being able to, you know, much more accurately be able to make decisions on sectioning and just knowing who's going to show up on the first day. And so again, I just want to give the shout out to Carmina and all of the support that the family liaisons and our office staff gave to making that happen, just incredible. So thank you again very much. Okay, so now I have an introduction that I'm really pleased to be able to introduce our new assistant principal at London Middle School. You formally acted on her employment last month, but we wanted to have her come and be introduced formally. And so Natalie Nicole, okay, Nicoleison. Did I get it? Nicoleison?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Natalie, come on up.
Good evening. I'm really excited to be here. As you can tell, my family and I are just really thrilled to be a part of this community, and we are so excited to start school tomorrow. My son Elijah will be starting kindergarten at Field. We're very excited. Benji here is at the Little Wildcat Daycare Center, and my wife is the new dean's assistant at home, so we really definitely are all in. And we are just so thankful, again, to be a part of this wonderful community. I've had a wonderful month or so working with Anastasia and Saul Z and the rest of the team at London. And again, we're just really excited to see you guys honor that commitment of kind of empowering and honoring the uniqueness of every student. And so having people like our family be a part of the school community, it's wonderful for our students to see. So I really appreciate that and look forward to a long career here at 21. You want to say your name?
Benji.
What is it?
Benji.
Benji, okay.
Our new assistant principal at Kilmer was not able to join us this evening due to a family commitment, but we will introduce her in September. And that wraps up our announcements and celebrations.
Great, great, love it. Let's move right into staff communication then. I believe you have an update on, you have an update for us. I don't know where I'm going with this.
Yes, so we're pleased to present to the board our annual communications and community engagement update, and so I'm going to turn over the program to Cass Young. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
So we're here annually to give a summary and analytics of our communications and community engagement update. And I have asked Andy to present the communications this year, and then I will present the community engagement. So take it over, Andy.
All right. So last year was a great year for communications. Every year, we create a comms plan and usually update it annually. This time around, we're going to create one for the same length as the strategic plans of 25 to 28. We'll do, we'll do annual updates as needed, just kind of see where our progress goes. Aligned with that, we added stoplights to this plan to kind of show the progress we've made. Green is good, yellow needs work, red, we haven't made much progress on it. Fortunately, a lot of it is green, so that's a good thing. One of our big pushes this past year was to redesign our newsletters. We heard a lot at the end-of-year survey that people wanted something mobile-friendly, something easier to read. So after doing some research, we landed on Smore. A lot of districts in the area use it. It's easily accessible on your phone, it translates into over 130 languages, it can better integrate YouTube and photos, and it was cost-effective for us. So we switched to that beginning with last July, kind of as a trial one, trial run, and then we did an August one for both staff and family. A little more information about the family and community-facing one. You have all of these in your slides as well. Just, it's more, you know, what we send out from what happens in the board meeting, what happens around in the schools, other events coming up. This is kind of the big number we wanted to focus on. This is our open rate for the past, we tracked it for the past three years. The average open rate in the industry is about 40%. So in '22, '23, and '23, '24, we started the year right at that cusp and then kind of dipped under it. Since we switched to Smore, as you can see, minus a couple of blips in August, September, and February, we've been north of 60%, which is, I mean, 20, 30 percentage points above the average. You want to say your name?
Benji.
What is it?
Benji.
Benji, okay.
Our new assistant principal at Kilmer was not able to join us this evening due to a family commitment, but we will introduce her in September. And that wraps up our announcements and celebrations.
Great, love it. Let's move right into staff communication then. I believe you have an update on, you have an update for us. I don't know where I'm going with this.
Yes, so we're pleased to present to the board our annual communications and community engagement update. And so I'm going to turn over the program to Cass Young. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
So we're here annually to give a summary and analytics of our communications and community engagement update. And I have asked Andy to present the communications this year, and then I will present the community engagement. So take it over, Andy.
All right. So last year was a great year for communications. Every year, we create a comms plan and usually update it annually. This time around, we're going to create one for the same length as the strategic plans of 25 to 28. We'll do annual updates as needed, just kind of see where our progress goes. Aligned with that, we added stoplights to these plans to kind of show the progress we've made. Green is good, yellow needs work, red, we haven't made much progress on it. Fortunately, a lot of it is green, so that's a good thing. One of our big pushes this past year was to redesign our newsletters. We heard a lot at the end of year survey that people wanted something mobile-friendly, something easier to read. So after doing some research, we landed on Smore. A lot of districts in the area use it. It's easily accessible on your phone. It translates into over 130 languages. It can better integrate YouTube and photos, and it was cost-effective for us. So we switched to that beginning with last July, kind of as a trial one, trial run, and then we did an August one for both staff and family. A little more information about the family and community-facing one. You have all of these in your slides as well. Just, it's more, you know, what we send out from what happens in the board meeting, what happens around in the schools, other events coming up. This is kind of the big number we wanted to focus on. This is our open rate for the past, we tracked it for the past three years. The average open rate in the industry is about 40%. So in '22, '23, and '23, '24, we started the year right at that cusp and then kind of dipped under it. Since we switched to Smore, as you can see, minus a couple of blips in August, September, and February, we've been north of 60%, which is, I mean, 20, 30 percentage points above the average. Right here as well, average time read. We didn't have any stats for '22, '23. It's just not something Parents Square offered at the time. But compared with our last issue, our '23, '24 edition and issue, we can see also that the minutes have exploded in how much time people are reading. I do not have a rationale for September or March, what kept them there so long. I think it's just, you know, right after spring break, right before spring break, or right as they settle into the new school year. It's just, there was nothing specifically in there that would have caused them to read. But hey, they're spending time, I'm not complaining. This is our internal newsletter, which is sent to about 1,000 staff members. It includes highlights, professional development opportunities, policy and procedure updates, other general reminders, also through Smore. Right here, again, our open rate year over year. The industry average is about 35% open rate for an internal staff email. The past three years, we've done well in the first couple of months and then dipped below the industry average for the '22, '23, and '23, '24 school years. But for Smore last year, we averaged about 80% read through the entire year, except for September, when we had a random drop-off. So, and we're averaging 1,500 to 1,600 views, so we have people returning to it over and over to get that information, share it. Similarly, for average time read, we're seeing more and more people reading it longer, so they're getting that information, doing what they will with it. Again, I cannot explain September or January, only then it's the first official month after the year begins, and then right as they return from break. So looking forward, we are going to continue with Smore. We sent one out in August, and right now the numbers are still doing well. We're at about 70% for the family one and 85% for staff. We still have about a week to go, so I'm going to send those numbers out next week. For our newsletters, we want to have more engaging video, more concise stories. We really focused on that for our August newsletters, something short that pushes them online if they need to. A and B testing, where we send different segments to different populations, just to see what works well, if there's anything we need to refine. Same with segmenting. And then this last edition is based on a survey that we're sending out to see, this would be in Parents Square if we want to send out like a weekly top five of like the top five things you might have missed, like upcoming events, things from the library, stories from the schools. So we're going to wait and see what our families say on that before we move forward. Next up is social media, which has grown a lot over the past few years. We primarily use Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, and LinkedIn for those. Facebook is the largest reach with our family audience. Instagram, which I don't need to explain to these three, are our largest reach with our middle schoolers. Anything at London, Cooper, or Holmes always takes off. YouTube is where we host our longer-form videos and the board meeting streams, and then LinkedIn, we're expanding for recruitment efforts, but that's another branch of storytelling as well. I won't go into too much detail here, but from December 2023, when we really started tracking it to '24, we had an increase in both our Facebook and Instagram accounts, which is district-wide. There's a little breakdown of school by school here for Facebook in that same amount of time. And then Instagram, where we did see a larger growth across all of our accounts. A lot of them were newer, so it's still great to see all of those numbers. Over the past year, Facebook, we've seen an average 18% increase in followers across the district, while we've seen an average 85% increase across, growth in followers across Instagram. And then LinkedIn, we didn't have metrics for '23 to '24, but we've also seen an 80% increase in followers there. So more people are seeing it, more people are engaging with it. Again, breaking it down school by school. And then Instagram, where, again, we're seeing triple-digit growth among a handful of schools. So over the past two years, Facebook, we've seen an average 17% increase in followers, while Instagram, we've seen an average 118.85% increase across our followers. And then LinkedIn, that same figure that we can't account for. Again, little breakdown here. Cooper has exploded with 300% growth. So in terms of looking forward for social media, we want to have more engaging video, because we know video tends to do well, as well as consistent graphics. We're going to work with the PTOs a little bit more to promote their events, and then kind of track what resonates with followers, whether it's our people stories, whether it's events, district initiatives, announcements, what have you, as well as getting more content from our community itself. Carrie, thank you for donating a photo over the summer. And then we're also going to track better analytics. These past two years, we've really just done likes, comments, shares, and then followers. We're going to expand it to have total reach interactions, kind of see our followers versus non-followers, to see kind of where that data is coming from. Dipping into Parents Square, we shared these last year. I won't go into too many details here, but these are just some extra fun facts we have for Parents Square and how we communicate with our families. So we had 13,210 posts shared across the district between July 1st of last year and June 30th of this year. And then Kilmer, Tarkington, and Poe were our top three. Some more features we have, just to show across the district how much we're utilizing Parents Square, which these are in your board packet, so you will see this as well. This is the number I wanted to focus on. So our deliverability, we have a 99.67% contactability, which is the percentage of students with at least one contactable parent. The national benchmark for Parents Square at least is 97%. So we're trending above that. I actually met with representatives from Parents Square when I went to the seminar in DC, and they said they've never seen a number as high as ours. So it's a nice thing that we're getting so many people to receive our messaging. As for the apps, we're not quite at 50% yet of people who've downloaded the app, but even the people at Parents Square said 50% is rare. So to see a number that, like, that close to 50, they were impressed with. More interactions, so we had 3,942 of our close to 8,200 parents interact, which is either liking, commenting, RSVP-ing, volunteering, or donating items, all of the features that Parents Square has to offer. Looking forward, we want to offer both staff and parent training, just to kind of learn the ins and outs of Parents Square, faster responses to inquiries, questions, and technical support for those inevitable issues they have, a possible payment portal either through Parents Square or an external provider, we're looking into that. Other enhancements that are released by Parents Square, they have a lot in the pipeline that they are very excited about, and I am too. And then over the summer, I joined the Parents Square Ambassador Program, which is basically just, it might give us idea, our chances to try their products early, or just kind of consult with other districts on how to, or to try and get them to sign up for Parents Square. For our website, we continue to refine it every month with new photos. We have monthly meetings with our client Floodlight, and they kind of resolve any issues we have with them, like if we're having a bug or a new feature we want to add. They've been great partners, and they're very quick to answer whatever issues we have or introduce whatever features we want. For coming up, we will continue to be ADA compliant, especially as those restrictions roll out. One feature we've added, and we're in the process of updating, is a buy the numbers section on each website. It's just a quick, like, fast fact for each school, total number of students, graduation rates, languages, pick and choose. I know we announced this earlier this summer, but we did receive four awards from the National School Public Relations Association. This gives us a chance to kind of submit the content we worked on in the past year, to be judged by a panel of our peers, and then given three tiers of awards, honorable mention, award of merit, and then the top award, which is an award of excellence. So we got awards of excellence for our Getting to Know You series and our retiree videos from two school years ago. We got an award of merit for our new family newsletter, the 21 Ledger, and then we got an honorable mention for our staff-facing newsletter, the Staff Spotlight. In terms of media coverage, this is kind of when we appeared in the different publications or on the different TV stations in the area. We had 50 total mentions between July 1st of last year and June 30th this year, which is about the same as last year. It's been dipping a little, but there's a whole number of factors that can go into there. So last year we had 54, so we're right about there. And then two years ago, we had 64, so we're going down. But we're hoping that this year especially, we're going to find more compelling ways to send good news stories to the media, get them out here to cover the good news that we have to share, and then we can coordinate media requests through limited sources. This is other collateral material we've created over the past year. So registration flyers, Seamless Summer Flyers, Literacy Night, an impact report, items for our health center, just a whole collection of different collateral materials. Moving forward, we want to update our branding guidelines and encourage the staff to use these branding guidelines and templates, which we have uploaded into Canva. And then we're going to hopefully train them on Canva and other design software, so we don't always have to do the bulk of it. They can do it if they need to, or we can easily ask them questions, or we can answer questions they may have. For the coming school year, our goals as the communications department, we want to expand storytelling, so we're going to push for more stories from the schools and the community. Ongoing series expansions with our Getting to Know You leadership videos, our My Why Staff Stories, Meet Our Alumni, where we interview a former student, and then our Rising Stars or Student of the Week. We want to feature more video this year, as we do tend to see higher engagement in that. And then we're just waiting to hear our annual survey to the staff and community to see what worked, what we need to refine. So that's it. Are there any questions, at least from the comm side?
Not a question, but a comment. What you're doing is flying in the face of the issues that government bodies across the country have today. Municipalities, school boards, park districts, how to communicate, how to get the message out there with the decline of newspapers. And it just seems to me you're making fantastic strides. We appreciate all your hard work. I appreciate all your hard work, because I know how difficult a job it is. So thank you for what you're doing, and our community will benefit from the effort that you're making. Thank you.
Just a quick question regarding media coverage. You mentioned 50 total mentions. How many of those were our submissions as opposed to?
Not as many as previous years. I can pull the stats up and show you. There's still a few, I would say more than half were our submissions, but about halfway during the year, the Harold's Direct Submission Tool, which is kind of how we submitted stories to them, it wasn't filtered as much, so our stories kind of disappeared more and more, or just weren't published as frequently. But I can pull those numbers for you, but most of it was from external, from board actions, or just other things they've seen around.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question about social media. Going into this year, who controls our social media? Is it just the two of you, or is it, are there still people in the building posting?
Primarily the two of us. Melanie Flores are receptionists and communications assistant downstairs, but we do have some point people in the schools, usually the principals, assistant principals, whoever is kind of game to do it. But it's primarily just the two of us, Melanie, and then the principals and assistant principals.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Fantastic job, fantastic numbers.
Yeah, I just want to give a shout out to Andy. He's been here for, what, two and a half years, and he's done a phenomenal job with the day-to-day social media and the newsletter items. And, you know, he's out and about in the schools all the time, and people just love working with him, and he's doing a phenomenal job.
I think he also goes on the schools, too. I think he also goes on the schools, too.
Yeah. Yes.
So thank you.
Can you put the slides back up, Tyler, please? What'd you say?
Only two, sorry.
Only two. Okay, my section is community engagement, and I'm going to whip through this because these slides are long and we've got other presentations. So we also created a three-year community engagement plan that we, that aligns with the district plan, and we have put a progress report together with it when we can. And I created seven tenants of engagement models, and these are the ones that we actually came up with. Community building, community education, community organization, direct service to the community, direct products to the community, economic development, and institutional engagement. But we can't do it alone. There are so many other district staff members who do this type and similar work, including all these people listed on this slide. So the first is community building, and we feel it's fostering a sense of belonging and unity within the community. And we do it in a number of ways, mostly with the Buffalo Grove Rotary Club. And Deb and I went to an interesting, very powerful women's networking engagement event last night. Yeah.
Yeah, it was awesome finding all of these partners that we could bring into us. It was awesome.
There was probably 30 women there in this small house, and this person connected with that person, and just incredible connections. We also partner with the Wheeling Rotary and the Wheeling Chamber of Commerce through these events, the Wheeling Park District and Tuesday Night Markets, National Night Out, of course. And we also, I put this slide in because I think that the online platforms are very important for community building as well. We put out the flyers on the free healthy lunches. We put items in our virtual backpack to support the community. The next is community education. And I feel we've done some health and wellness fairs. I feel like the impact report is another way that we educate the community and other initiatives. I put other initiatives on most of the slides because we are not doing it alone. There are so many people here who help with these initiatives. The third is community organizing. And we have partnered with the Buffalo Grove Rotary Club to provide holiday food every Thanksgiving. Direct service to others, this is to offer immediate assistance and support to individuals. And we did that through a number of ways, the job fair, the registration events, the 5K run. These are just some of the pictures. I also think direct service to others includes the student apprenticeships that we've had over the years, because it does help build their experience. Direct products to others, we offer tangible products to meet the needs of the community. And we have donated items, toiletries to the Buffalo Grove High School Comfort Closet. I know the family liaisons have a lot of initiatives around this tenant and other initiatives. Economic development, this is again the job fair and also the student apprenticeships. Institutional engagement, strengthening ties between the community and external institutions. This is, I feel like this is where we reach out to the local vendors to get donations, grants, and showcase community achievements that we partner with. Oops, oops. I also put this slide in because I think it's important to push out our accomplishments and deepen our engagement through these institutional initiatives. So the Alumni Spotlight, the My Why, and then the Rising Stars, other events and initiatives. And moving forward, I want to be able to keep better track of attendance, engagement, and donations. Right now, we're just ticking off and putting together very rudimentary charts. I'd like to plan events with more notice. Sometimes I know that's not always available. And I'd like to align initiatives with other CCSD 21 resources, so we can all come together and know what one person is doing the other event and how we can coordinate better. I think that's it. Any questions? Carrie?
Questions?
Nope.
Well, that's a first.
All right, thank you very much.
You, Cass. All right, next, can we get an update on student enrollment, please?
Absolutely. I'll turn it over to Mr. Roberts.
All right. So first, these numbers have changed a bit, so I'll go over those. So first, these numbers have changed a bit, so I'll go over those. This report was pulled last week, so some of the numbers, we've had some more students enroll, so those numbers have changed, so I'll point those out to you. We'll go through, and I'll say Dr. Connolly kind of stole my thunder. When I looked at these numbers last week, coming from being a middle school principal with 1,100 kids, and we would usually start school with about 200 kids not enrolled, the first week of school was an absolute nightmare. And I was, I went through and I was like, wait, this can't be. So I went to Carmine, I was like, wait, this, we only have this little bit of kids not enrolled? And she was like, yeah. And I was like, that's impressive. So I just want to point out that for her team and all the events that were done to get kids enrolled, I was talking with the principal at Whitman, and I said, what are you doing today? She's like, oh, we're going over to one of the apartment complexes we serve to enroll kids. And I was like, what? She's like, yeah, we do it every year. We take our computers, we invite them down, and we meet families and get them signed up. And I was like, that's really incredible. So, you know, doing a lot to make sure our kids are enrolled. But as far as the enrollment goes here, field, no sections, so I'm just going to kind of get through these. So Poe, we do have one section that exceeds the guidelines, that is the dual, one of our dual-language sections. That classroom does have a teacher and an aide in it. So they are getting that support. And then Riley, last week when we pulled the report, we did not have any sections exceeding the guidelines. We did end up hiring, moving a teacher, so we have an extra kindergarten section and first grade section. We hired a first grade teacher. Our two second grade sections were both at 25. And then as of last week, we do have one that is now at 26. We have also, though, hired an aide to support those two second grade classrooms at Riley. We also do not have any anticipated students, the returning students not registered at four, none of them were in second grade. So the one that we got was actually a new student. And then our middle schools. So when this report was done, it was 13 sections of science and eight sections of social studies were over the guidelines of 27. One of the reasons for that is July 29th, we had a science social studies teacher resign. So we were not able to fill that position. So we lost essentially those sections that we were, she was teaching, so those students had to go somewhere. Out of those sections, we do have, five of those science sections are co-taught, so for special education, and three are co-taught for English language learners. So essentially, we have eight of those that have two teachers in them. Three of those sections also have a TA in for support. For the social studies, we have four of them that are co-taught, special education, and three of them that are co-taught for English language, as well as a TA pushing into three of those for support as well. We did try to fill the position. We got no really qualified candidates. We got, the issue with the position was the amount of science sections that this teacher would have been teaching. So it was more than 50%, so the teacher would have had to have been endorsed in science. And most of the applications we got were social studies teachers, so we were unable to fill that position.
Are we keeping that open?
I'm sorry?
Are we keeping that position open for possible recruitment?
For right now, we decided to close the position with the thought of, two weeks before school would be very, we didn't think we were going to get a teacher. At the same time, breaking, having those students in class for a month to two months and then breaking up those classes was probably not worth it. At Homes, we have one section of science and one section of social studies that was over as of last week. Right now, it's moved up to two in social studies. And there are some TA support in some of those classes in one of the social studies, and both science classes have TA support. And then in London, it's actually now only two sections of science and three sections of social studies. They were able to move some students around, and they have, in both science sections, there are TA support, and then there is one TA support in one of the social study sections. Overall, if we look at averages, here is the average class size for the different schools, as well as the range of class sizes. Again, with that Riley being 26 now. Those larger class sizes at the middle schools are those science and social studies that I just discussed. We are watching a section at Whitman, you'll see a lower number there. That number has gone up a little bit. It is in our dual-language program. So we have two or, two of those classes that are lower than we expected, so we're going to watch that over the next week. We have had some enrollments come in this week, and if we need to collapse a section and move a teacher, we will do that. And then some of the things that we've done for the high class sizes in the last few weeks, we did reduce a section at one school and reallocate it to another, we've added teaching assistants, and we've added a full-time teacher. Any questions?
I have a question.
Could you go back, please, over what we're doing at Poe and Riley to deal with those over credit sections again?
So with Riley, it is the, so we, we added a section at kindergarten and first grade. Yep, so we've added FTE there to reduce those class sizes. And then with second grade being right at the cusp there, we added a teacher's aide.
And the aide will be in the classroom all the time?
They'll be back and forth between those classrooms, yes.
And what's the, that second class, what's the size of that class?
One's at 25, one's at 26.
And we're going to keep an eye on how that works?
Yes.
Because historically, what we tried to do when we could was to shift the larger classes higher in the, in the grade level, so that the lower classes or younger classes were smaller.
Yes. I will also point out that the guidelines are, at that grade level, are 25.
Right, right.
So we are at one at 25, one at 26, with a teaching assistant that goes in there. I also want to point out, there are no more available classrooms at Riley.
Yeah, that was, that was the other thing I was going to say. And then, and I think what, correct me if I'm wrong, like, those, like the fourth and fifth grades, breaking down a class, combining kids and taking that teacher and moving them down, right? Like making those class sizes higher, but they're, you know, they're all in the 20s as well, so we don't have, if we did that, then we'd have class sizes at fourth and fifth grade in the 30s, which we don't want.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, you just answered my question. I was going to ask if there were any open classroom spaces at Riley.
No, we'd have to put somebody on a cart.
Okay. And then, yeah, I teach on a cart this year, so. And then my second question was about the teacher's assistants that are in those sections. Are they there to support, are any of them there to support specific children, or are they just general assistants that are there to support the entire classroom?
So for the Riley position, that, that is a general teaching assistant that is there to support the teacher and all students.
Okay.
For the ones at, at the middle school, those teaching assistants in there for specific needs of specific students. But then, then there's also the special education co-teachers, and both, and ELL co-teachers.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Louis. Appreciate it. All right. All right, we're going to move into public comment now. The board will allow any individual to share a public comment for up to three minutes. Such comments should not include discussion of personnel matters, which should be brought directly to the attention, excuse me, of the appropriate school official. During public comment, the board and administration will listen but may not respond to the public. Yolanda, you've handed me two comment cards. Were there any others? Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and start with Ben Coleman.
I'd like to start with an apology to the board. Someone pointed out that I wore the same shirt last month. I do actually own more than one shirt. My name is Ben Coleman, and I am the current president of the District 21 Education Association. I'm also a project lead-the-way teacher at Cooper Middle School, and I plan to shorten my remarks a little because school is back in session, and like most staff and students, I'm sure, I'm tired. I'm really enjoying my new position, and the staff has been very accommodating, but I think we're all getting back into the habits of school, and it's taking a toll. We should be fine in a few weeks, but thank goodness for weekends. I'm happy to report that administrators are trying hard to address the concerns of staff from meetings held last spring, and many staff members are happy that they can see the results of these conversations. We're optimistic for this new year, and we hope to continue to talk with administration to help move things forward. I would also like to mention that the District 21 Education Association is excited to be marching in the Buffalo Grove Days Parade again on Saturday, August 30th at 11:30. We look forward to seeing everyone there, including some board members who hopefully will be there again like they were last year. Thank you for all that you do for the staff and students at District 21. We look forward to partnering with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. KDS?
My name is Katie Swinnich, and I'm a proud District 21 mom who, as of tomorrow, will have three boys attending Riley. Sorry, I get emotional when I talk about my children. Tonight, I'm here to advocate for those second graders at Riley. My concern is simple. The classes are just too large. The board, Dr. Connolly, Mrs. Blainey, and other board members have communicated repeatedly that they are monitoring class sizes and committed to keeping class sizes at the recommended number. We just saw right here that it is over that number. You have done the right thing and added two sections at Riley to address this, but what about Connor and our other second graders, who have started the year with 25 and 26 students? What you also failed to mention was one of those classes also has four deaf and hard-of-hearing students that come into the class. That is 29 second graders. That is too large. I also heard, sorry, this wasn't part of my comment, but I also heard that there is not a room at Riley. It's time to think outside the box. It's time to get creative. As a teacher, as a mom, we do it every day. It's time to think outside the box. Your other solution is to have an aide in the classroom. Well, that's just giving our amazing teachers one more person to manage. This is not an appropriate solution. There is no substitute for a certified teacher. We have all seen the numbers. We've heard what you said. We've heard that you're monitoring closely. Well, the monitoring is over. It's now time to just add a section.
Cass, have we received any written public comments?
Yes, we have, and I have forwarded it to the board.
Thank you. Those will be shared with the board, and the comment will be attached to next month's meeting minutes. All right, let's move on into our consent agenda. We received five Freedom of Information requests this month. There is one board conference and travel expenses for member attendance to the IASB North Cook Division Meeting in October. As a side, I encourage you all to register if you're able to attend. It's always a valuable PD experience. I had a chance to meet with Mike Zager to go over some questions I had on the financial documents. I appreciate his time in clarifying those for me. Nothing major, just some clarifications. Does anyone need anything polled from the consent agenda?
Yes, I need item A polled, please.
Okay. Degmar, I believe you do as well?
Yep.
Okay. Could I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item A, which were the minutes of last month's board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Arlen?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
Eliana?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jessica?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item A?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Bill?
Aye.
Carrie?
Abstain.
I abstain. Jessica?
Yes.
Arlen?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
Eliana?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, great. Let's move into board communication. Before we make the usual rounds, I just want to note, you should have received an email from our council, Heim, Spatracca, and Fester, about a school law seminar via Zoom that they're hosting in September. If you're interested, please register. It's always a really good update on what's going on out there, and I will be attending that as well. Let's move into NSSEO. Debbie?
Thank you. For the next several months, the main thing that we're working on is our updating of our Articles of Agreement and doing a change in the way that we're set up. I mean, the whole thing, creating a second board, an operations board of all the superintendents for the member districts. So under your executive content, there's a lot of information there. The reason they're in executive content is because they are not, they're, they're all drafts, so it's not ready. But we do have a presentation that Dr. Schnorr, who's the superintendent there, put together so that all of the boards are being presented with exactly the same information, so we'd like to play that, and then we can come back for questions briefly if anybody has anything.
Good deal.
Thank you for taking the time from your busy board agendas to view this video and the important information shared regarding the government structure at NSSEO. This is Dr. Meg Schnorr, Superintendent of NSSEO, and as you know, we are a special education cooperative, serving your district and seven other area districts, enabling the provision of special education services for the most complex educational needs. In fall of 2024, NSSEO, along with all member districts and a variety of NSSEO shareholders, met to develop a strategic plan to guide the cooperative in meeting the needs of member districts for the next five years. Four key priorities emerged: governance, finance and facilities, instruction and programs, and highly qualified staff. This evening, I am presenting about the governance priority. For the more than 50 years NSSEO has served districts, the governance structure has been that of a single-tiered board, the NSSEO Governing Board, which is made up of one elected board member from each of the member district boards, coming together monthly to govern the work of the cooperative. During the original strategic plan meetings in fall of 2024, as well as the action plan meetings in January of 2025, the shareholders agreed that there needs to be another layer of governance added to the structure. This layer of governance would be composed of the superintendent from each of the member districts and the NSSEO superintendent, meeting in alignment with the Open Meetings Act to collaboratively make decisions of how best to provide for students with special needs in all member districts. These decisions would be made in alignment with the budget established annually by the elected governing board members. Making the change to a two-tiered board requires the change of the NSSEO Articles of Agreement, which were already overdue to be reviewed and revised. A copy of a draft of the new NSSEO Articles of Agreement is included in your board packets. Naturally, the question, why do we need to change, has arisen in many discussions. NSSEO exists to meet the needs of member districts, and member districts want to share in the decisions that are made on behalf of their students, including those attending NSSEO programs. Another question has been, the superintendents already meet monthly in an advisory capacity with the superintendent and administration of NSSEO. Isn't that sufficient? While the implementation of the NSSEO Superintendent Council has increased the dialogue between superintendents and NSSEO administration, it does not hold decision-making power. An operational board would have the formal authority to make operational decisions on matters such as the e-learning policy, program design, matters such as the e-learning policy, program design, staffing models, and transportation services, giving districts a direct role in shaping the outcomes that impact the students and their budgets. Unlike advisory groups, an operation board would meet publicly under the Open Meetings Act. This creates a legally accountable structure where all deliberations and decisions are transparent, documented, and accessible to the public. This helps build broader trust, which has been a key concern raised in the strategic planning process. Further, an operational board will also help NSSEO reduce the sharing of misinformation and back-channel problem solving. The operational board removes the ambiguity. Instead of conversations happening offline or in silos, key issues would be addressed through a structured, visible process. This helps eliminate conjecture and fosters mutual accountability. The question of how was this decision made will no longer be an issue. Additionally, the operational board with superintendent representation from all member districts in a formal capacity ensures that decisions reflect the diversity of needs across our entire cooperative, not just those with the loudest voices, most urgent needs, or lowest or highest fund balances. It helps us function as a cooperative with shared priority, not just being a service provider. Ultimately, this is about building confidence in how NSSEO serves students and stewards the significant financial contributions from member districts. The operational board will provide a platform for member districts to shape strategy, monitor value, and affirm that NSSEO is indeed delivering on our mission. The Superintendent Advisory Council is critical and will continue to be, but an operational board offers the public an empowered and equitable forum of collective leadership. My goal as the superintendent of NSSEO is that by the end of this year, every member district will not only understand how decisions are made, but will also see clear evidence that NSSEO is more than a value-added partner. We are a shared investment in a better future for our students with exceptional needs. The addition of the operational board does not in any way diminish the importance of our governing board. The governing board will continue to set the budget within which the operational board functions, as well as hire and evaluate the NSSEO superintendent. But their role extends far beyond that. We need our governing board to continue to bring the needs of NSSEO back to your member district boards so that resources can continue to be allocated to meeting the needs of all of your students. We also need our governing board members to ensure that our students continue to have a place and a voice in our community, and that their needs are considered beyond the school, from community events to employment opportunities and the generation of supplemental resources to provide for their needs. We have a cautionary tale that has taken shape this summer in that a neighboring special education cooperative will no longer be in existence this time next year. We want to strengthen the collaboration between member districts and NSSEO to ensure that we can continue to provide the services for our students in their home community. The time to move forward is now. As board members of eight different school boards, I am asking that you review the draft articles, ask questions, and eventually ratify them so that we can move forward in a highly transparent and effective manner as we work to implement all of the priorities of the NSSEO strategic plan and provide for your students with the most complex special needs. Thank you.
Okay, so I have given everybody four sheets of paper. Don't read it now. It's not light reading. One of our board members, one from another district, had a lot of questions, so I condensed them down into one sheet so that everybody, this may answer some of your questions that you have. And I also gave everyone the tentative timeline. We're not bound by this. If people have more questions as we go through the Articles of Agreement, one district may not like the way one thing is worded, and so it may have to come back several times. Next month, the only thing we'll be voting on is whether we officially push this out to the districts for review so we can get everything worked out. This has already been looked at by our attorneys, so there is not, the legality of everything is not in question. But if anybody, everybody would like to look it over, you have two files, the Articles of Agreement for 2025 and the past one that I believe was redlined out, so everybody can use those to compare. If you have any questions, you can feel free to reach out to myself or Mike, because he's been very involved in it, too. This is something I feel very strongly about because, yes, the co-op that is directly north of us, true north, this time next year will not exist because all of their districts are pulling out. We currently have eight, and then we have a lot of students from other districts who asked to come in and be placed at NSSEO because there are people that say, oh, my district can handle these kids. No, these are our kids that are in eighth grade, still in wheelchairs, not potty-trained, tube-fed. These are the most exceptional needs kids, and we need to make sure we can do the best for them. So I am putting this out to everyone. Please look it over and reach out to me with any questions you have.
Okay. When is the next NSSEO?
The next NSSEO meeting is on September 3rd, so it's coming up very quickly. So I would like everybody, if they would reach out, and even if they can just say, yeah, feel free to, yes, push it out to the districts if I can even just get that, but please look it over. It's a little bit of, I think, 15 pages of light reading.
Okay.
I know a few of my fellow board members will enjoy reading it because that's the type of reading they like to do.
I don't know why you're looking at me when you say stuff like that.
It wasn't just you. But it's, I mean, we had a lot of things, like I said, it had this, these articles have not been reviewed in 10 years. So there were a lot of things that needed to be changed anyways. So we were going to be reviewing them, and then we're going, oh, yeah, no, we need to do a lot more than just a brief review. And then they will be up every two years, once we get them solidified.
Okay, so just to clarify, you'd like us to review the proposed Articles of Agreement 2025 and respond to you before September 3rd?
Correct.
Whether individually we're okay with you going forward, and you'll take the consensus decision of the board as your guidance going forward?
As my vote, yes, that to, yes, push it out to the districts so we can all thoroughly review. I would also like to invite anyone here, especially since we have several new board members, several new cabinet members, anyone that would like to go out and visit the NSSEO facilities. They have Minor, which is pre-K through eighth grade. Timber Ridge, which is for our behavioral students. We have a lot of students over at Timber Ridge, and they do fantastic things. There is Kirk, which is the age 14 through age 22, the end of the school, the school year of a student turning 22. Fort Transitional Services, and seeing what they've done with these kids is great. And then there's Sunrise Lake. I couldn't think of it for a second. That's out in Bartlett, and that is a nature-oriented thing, and it is just, it is gorgeous out there. It's a bit of a drive, but a lot of team building. I'd love to have, you know, anybody that would want to go, reach out to me. I'll get ahold of Dr. Schnorr, and we can go on tours.
Does anyone have questions for Debbie?
I do have a question. Debbie, on the handouts you shared with us, can you, I'm sorry if I missed this from you, who is answering in the black bold and whose answer is in the blue?
Okay, the regular black is from the fellow board member who is from District 26. That's the initial question. And then Dr. Schnorr was both the black answer and the blue answer with, when, because it came across with, you know, can you clarify more on this? And I didn't want to send every, put out a 15-page document for everyone, so I just condensed everything down.
Any other questions?
I'll keep it, I have a list, but I'm going to keep it very short and not ask you all of them right now.
Okay.
But just as a clarification, I'm trying to determine, looking at this, whether the operational board is making recommendations to the governing board or is actually making decisions. At one point, I see in Section 2E, it mentions specifically making recommendations on policies, purchases, employment of personnel. Yet it seemed in the presentation from Dr. Schnorr that it was more that the board might be actually making decisions.
It's going to be a combination of the two, depending upon the items. Dr. Connolly, it's like?
Yeah, so it, there is, the operating board would have delegated authority based on the Articles of Incorporation to make specific decisions. The governing board still approves the budget. They still hire and evaluate the superintendent or executive director of the, of the association. There may be, and this would be based on the Articles of Agreement, that ultimately get acted upon by the member district boards, there may be other items that the governing board maintains sole decision-making authority over. But in terms of the day-to-day operational decisions, you know, so.
We don't make determinations on the day-to-day operational decisions.
Right.
That's, that makes sense.
Right.
But things, so they will be still responsible for hiring the executive directors specifically.
Correct.
But would the operational board be reviewing candidates, making recommend?
That would be a determination of the governing board as to what level they would want the operating board involved in that.
Okay. They would be included in the criteria determination, not necessarily in the actual That was one thing that has been very much of a sticking point, that, you know, don't want to give up too much, for lack of a better term, power, but there are certain things that none of the school board, none of the governing board members are educators. And so there's certain things that we don't have the expertise that the superintendents do have. So that was one of the issues that we had. That's why a lot of these things, there may be some, a lot of tweaks in here.
Okay.
As everybody goes through it.
And then I'll just ask one other question, which, do all eight districts need to ratify this to go forward?
Majority.
So it's a majority?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I agree with Bill. I thought there was some confusion there as well. And I also mentioned to Debbie that two things that jumped out at me was, one, the names of the two boards seem to indicate that they're both the governing board, just because operating board sounds like a governing board could. So I would try to have a better distinction between the two, just personal view.
Okay, I will say that other cooperatives, and there are several, that have this bifurcated board structure. The governing board are the elected officials. The operating board are the superintendents or their designees of the member districts. So this is, this is a, this is not a new structure. This would be a new structure for NSSEO, but this is a structure that multiple other cooperatives hold. So that's kind of the terminology that is being utilized in this way. And so, you know, it's in somewhat, I think it could be easier to just maintain that because that is what, you know, kind of has been known. But again, I also want to emphasize that the only decision that is being made, Debbie will, will be voting based on your, you know, consensus, is to just move this thing to the member districts. This is not, I mean, so then after that happens.
Right, right.
There's a 90-day review period that each district, and then all of the going back and asking clarifying questions and things of that nature, to get to a final, that then the governing board of NSSEO would need to take final action on.
Right.
And then the, the member district boards take action on.
Yeah, understood. And then the other thing that I mentioned to Debbie was, and it's more clear to me now, because of the two operating, I could see a situation where your operating board made a decision that was not necessarily agreed to by the superintendent of NSSEO. There could be a difference of opinion.
Correct.
It seems to me that the operating board should have their chair as a member of the governing board so that this, so the superintendent doesn't have to argue both ways.
Again, you know, that's something that I think is, is, could be problematic insofar as the governing board are elected officials. The members of the operating board are superintendents.
Sure.
Not elected officials. So whether the chair of the operating board is expected to be in attendance at the governing board meetings, I mean, that's certainly something, you know, but, you know, again, the operating board would be making decisions based on the delegated authority that the governing board, and based on the Articles of, of, you know, of agreement, would dictate, right? And so in that way, it would be no different than, you know, in my role as superintendent, you know, this board may not act in, you know, they may act differently than my recommendation. It's, it'd be the same difference that if there's a recommendation of the NSSEO that the, that the operating board does not agree to, that is within their delegated authority, then that board takes that action.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Debbie right now? Okay, we all have our homework to do.
Awesome. Thank you. And you'll also notice under the public comment, public content, is the governing board brief from NSSEO that we put out every month. That's just what has happened, has pictures of the kids and parents doing all kinds of fun stuff. And as we get closer to bigger events, I'll let everybody know about that. But that's all I have for NSSEO tonight.
Thank you, Debbie. Ed Redd, Bill?
Thank you, Jessica. The Ed Redd Legislative Breakfast was held here on August 1st. Many of us were in attendance. It was a great success. I enjoyed speaking with our legislators on topics ranging from mandated categoricals to unfunded mandates. It was also interesting to speak to Superintendent Tricia Moncada of Fremont 79 on their ongoing issues with development and funding for a large property in her community, which just reaffirmed my belief that TIF reform is still desperately needed in our state. Thank you to our administrators, tech team, and organic life for their help in putting the event together. Ed Redd's kickoff luncheon will be held on October 20th. More details and registration information to come in the next few weeks. Ed Redd's first member meeting of the school year will be held on Thursday, November 6th. It is currently planned as an evening meeting, as people have looked for different timeframes to get more involvement in there, so hopefully that will go forward. There'll be more information again to come as we get closer to the event. And finally, you should have received in the past week, Ed Redd's Monthly Floor to the Door. That included a survey for legislative initiatives. Please take a look at it, as it will help the organization determine their legislative direction in the upcoming year. And that's it for Ed Redd.
Great, thank you. If you would move on to IASB, please?
If you'll give me a minute to click, I will certainly do that. Come on. Okay, it decided not, oh, there we go. The IASB North Cook Division Dinner will be held on Wednesday, October 22nd, at District 214's Forest View Education Center. The featured speaker will be Doug Bolton, who a number of us have heard before. There will also be an election of officers for the division held. If interested in attending, please contact Yolanda. Just as a reminder, the joint annual conference is quickly approaching. If you are planning to attend and haven't yet registered, again, please contact Yolanda as soon as you can. And finally, IASB will be holding virtual workshops on the proposed changes to its constitution, and there's going to be quite a few of them to be proposed this year. While Debbie will be updating us at a future date prior to the conference, if you'd like a more detailed explanation of what was going on, IASB will be having a number of video workshops that you can either catch live, or I would assume they'll post them on their website and catch it at a later date. And that's it for IASB.
All right, just to close the loop there, I've asked Debbie to continue to be our board's delegate at the conference this year. Just let Debbie or me know if you have any questions about that process.
If I may add briefly, there are 12 changes to the constitution this year. Most of them are very basic, common sense. There are, there were, I believe there were two that were, might have some conversation on, and there was only one resolution presented this year. I'm sure we're still going to get lots of conversation on it. I don't know what it was about, but we'll get, have a lot of people.
Thank you. And Arlen, do you have an update from North Cook?
I do. These are exciting times. As I've shared with all of you over the years, I think I've been on the North Cook Board 20 years now. We've gone from tiny to larger, and in the last six years, we've outgrown the biggest leap that we have taken over the years that I've been on the board. We've now outgrown that. We're meeting next week to begin to look at a solution to our space problems.
to our space problems, which would allow us to accommodate more students, provide more services, including hopefully physical education, which we can't do on campus right now. So I'll have a report to you next month. I have not seen the materials yet. But we're meeting next Monday at 7:15 a.m. bright and early, and it will be exciting to see where we go next. So I'll keep you posted on that. But very exciting. And the demand, obviously, as you all know, continues to grow for the services that we provide and our staff provides. So that's all.
Great, thank you. Eliana, I believe you had a quick update about the library?
Yeah. So really quickly, I just wanted to point out the new partnership between District 21 and Indian Trails. They are offering library cards for all students of the district. This is totally optional. Parents can opt in. They did receive a form, a message, I believe, earlier this week. Cards will be distributed at the schools, and I think the deadline for that is Friday, September 19.
Great, thank you. Members, anyone else who has an update?